Good morning, I'm Dr. Laverne Lewis, TRIMED's Board President. Welcome to a special meeting of the TRIMED Board of Directors. We are holding this August 20th, 2025 special meeting online via WebEx on this morning. I think it's about nine oh four or five. This meeting was duly noted and members of the public are able to attend through their phones and computers. This meeting is also being recorded. And will be available on YouTube. Written minutes are also being taken. I'd like to acknowledge our board members that are here and will acknowledge when others join in. We have Director Thomas Kim. And we have Director J T Flowers. I do not see any other board members and then also myself. Thank you for being with us today. At our July 24th, 2025 regular business meeting, General Manager De Su provided a report to the Board on TRIMED's financial conditions. Following this report, board members expressed interest in having the opportunity to ask questions and talk with each other about the information contained in the report. And everyone should have received a copy of that report on the portal. For those reasons, after consulting with the General Manager, I decided to call a special meeting of the Board in order to give the Board members the chance to ask questions and have a discussion. This special meeting is not a regular business meeting. We do not have a public forum, nor are we voting on any resolutions. Our next regular business meeting is scheduled at our normal time Wednesday, September 24th in our boardroom here at One Main Place. Um, to kick us off this morning, General Manager De Su will give us a brief recap and update on his July 2025 report regarding TRIMED's financial conditions, which he originally shared during our last board meeting. When a General Manager has finished speaking and he will answer questions and it will be freely opened up for comments and discussion between the Board. At the conclusion summary will follow and then any action items for the General Manager. Um, also, if you wish to ask questions, join in for the Board, please use your hand emoji so that I can recognize and see that you have comments. And not seeing everyone, any new board members? Um, now that we have the PowerPoint up, I cannot see everyone has any or other board members besides Director Kim and Director Flowers have joined. No, okay. I don't know who is on the phone. There's a phone icon on the screen.
It looks like it doesn't clarify, President, who the caller and user is.
It's Robert Kellogg.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Welcome, Director Kellogg. Probably on the phone and can hear us. That's good. Okay, let's go ahead. I'm going to turn the floor over to General Manager De Su at this time.
Well, good morning, President Lewis, members of the Board. Thank you all for being here with us this morning. I just want to take a moment here to update you on the actions we are taking to balance our budget. Uh, you should know that throughout this entire process, I'm committed to doing it with care, compassion, and transparency. You've seen much of this information, so I plan to go quickly to provide the most time for questions as we, as we move forward. Let's talk about where we stand today. As you know, TRIMED is currently operating in a financial deficit and we're facing a significant fiscal cliff in 2031. While an increase in the STIF would help address some of our long-term needs and buy us more time to act, a point one increase will still leave us with a funding gap. I just want to repeat that a point one increase will still leave us with a funding gap. A funding gap of $300 million, and that's why we're taking action now. So TRIMED is committed to achieving a balanced budget by the start of fiscal year 2029. So that's July 1st, 2028. A balanced budget means that our revenues that we bring into the organization are equal or greater than our expenditures, ensuring fiscal sustainability while we maintain our focus on safety, reliability, and essential maintenance. So let's talk about how did we get here? Since the start of the pandemic, we've seen a loss in ridership. With it, a loss in our annual passenger fare revenue. We lost $60 million or a 50% reduction in passenger fare revenue. We've also seen an inflation that drive up our costs by 53%. And when you look at that 53% of inflation, that's our union contracts, our wages, our medical with our contract, also electricity, fuel costs, and also cost of maintenance materials for buses and trains that make up that 53% inflation drive up. Because of what's happening in our community, we've had to make investments in safety and security to keep our riders and our employees safe. Costs have gone up 233% since 2022. So to give you kind of an update, we are spending an additional $48 million annually for safety on the system that wasn't budgeted. And we also have increased our workforce, our operators and our trainers. So the question today is kind of why not wait? I know some of you are wondering, why not wait and use up all of our reserves? The simple answer is it will take time to make a $300 million correction. We simply cannot do it in a single year. So the longer that we take to make the cuts, the deeper the cuts have to be. We know that it will take time for us to make service reductions and really conduct the necessary public outreach that you, the Board, have told us that we need to do so properly, and we are. Uh, we also need time to work with lawmakers for hopefully increasing the STIF funding and do the necessary outreach around a fare increase. We want to be as thoughtful as we can and really take the necessary time again as we work toward a better financial position. So how will we get there as we move forward? We are going to solve our $300 million deficit. We're looking to three things. One, we need to save $159 million through service reductions. We need to save $93 million through general and administrative reductions. And then we need to work towards a $48 million in additional revenue increase. And I want to note, and I think this is very critical for us as we talk today. I want to note that if we are unsuccessful in gaining new revenue through a fare increase or through an increase in STIF, we will need to make an additional $48 million in service and operational cuts to fill the $300 million deficit. So at this point, we are moving forward to reduce our overall service by about 10% by the end of calendar year 2027. So we're going to reduce our overall service by 10% by the end of 2027. And again, we will need to make deeper reductions beyond that if the additional revenues are not generated. We are going to do this in a very phased approach, starting with relatively modest reductions, doing cuts to frequency first in November this year and again in March of 2026. And with that, I want to just caveat, there will be no bus lines or no train lines reduced. It's only frequency first in November and also March. And with the cuts to MAX and bus service, we will also have associated cuts, service cuts on our lift pair transit services. But then, we will need to make deeper cuts in calendar year December of 2026. And then we're going to do it again in December of 2027. We will begin this November with reducing frequencies in the evenings. And I want to repeat that, this November, reducing frequencies in the evenings on four, four bus lines. And we will cut frequency in the evenings on our FX2 division at night and early mornings. Another round of cuts, another round will come in March of 2026, where we will reduce the number of trips during some morning and evening periods on four frequent service bus lines. And this is in March again of 2026. We will also engage the public and adjust plans as needed before implementing larger cuts in the winter of 2026 and also the winter of 2027. The timing of these larger cuts will give us the time that we need to carefully, and I mean carefully, consider public input, legislative action, and also our own internal efficiencies. So right now, we plan on making additional cuts that will bring us to an overall 10% reduction in service on both bus and MAX. MAX changes may include such changes as frequency adjustments. And really, we're looking at possibly changing the green line to operate only between Gateway and Clytemus Town Center, um, forcing a transfer onto the blue line or the red line for people to get into downtown. Bus changes will include further frequency reductions and may involve eliminating additional lines or portions of the lines. I want to talk to you a little bit about what we're looking at from our internal perspective, non-service spending reduction. While we're working to minimize the level of service reductions by taking a phased approach, we are also trimming costs throughout the agency. We will pause all new discretionary initiatives, all new discretionary initiatives for the next three years. Also limiting future increases to $3 million annually and thereafter, a reduction from our $7.5 million in annual discretion spending presented in our prior adopted budgets. We also plan to reduce our general and administrative costs across the organization by 5%. We plan on a number of efficiency reviews across the division, including a full review of our workforce. And that's underway right now that we're starting. We're starting at the top of the organization. And I just want to put that out to the Board and to the public. The first review is starting to look at the executive team of this organization. We also, we're going to, we're going to focus on our state of good repair. Um, we're making a long overdue commitment, long overdue commitment to our state of good repair backlog, which is in our financial forecast now. I want to just let you know, Board and the public, that our state of good repair was not in our financial forecast. So now we're putting that in our financial forecast as we move forward. Also included in our financial forecast over the next 15 years is funding to support fleet replacement needs and capital investments. And then additional revenue that we're talking about, finally, we're going to seek additional revenue as part of the solution. We, we plan to propose an adult fare increase of 20 cent to become effective the fall of 2028. And this is in alignment with our strategic financial plan fare policy. So this one-time fare increase that we're talking about in the fall of 2028 is approximately, it will bring in an additional $5 million per year in revenue. We will also continue to pursue a stiff increase, which I'm being told that there's a possibility that there's testimony either on the 25th or the 29th, and we're waiting on state leaders to, to let us know. But we're going to continue to pursue that. Um, a stiff increase of a point one percent would double our current receipts and bring us up to $103 million per year. So right now, we're getting a point one percent, which is about half of that. If it doubles that, if we get the, the additional point one, it'll take us to a point two. And the revenue that will come in will be $103 million per year. We're also looking at other areas where we may be able to generate more revenue. So I wanted to stop and pause and just let you know, that's a really quick update on where we are with, you know, with things now. And as you all are aware, we are not the only public entity that's going through these types of financial issues. Governments, which you've just seen with ODOT, you've seen with PBOT here locally, and all 77 of our transit agencies across the state of Oregon is going through it. And then I can tell you, majority of all large transit agencies around the country are going through this process as well. Um, we are all facing significant and immediate, immediately fiscal cliffs that are there. But I do want to just remind you, the difference here at TRIMED is that we have noted before is that we have some reserves. And we are different from most organizations right now. Those reserves will provide us time to be thoughtful, to be measured and phased in our approach. But by acting now, and I want to say this again, by, by us acting now, we are putting TRIMED on a very stable path forward. And this is a tremendous amount of work to do. But again, we want to take the necessary time to get things done right, the right way, at the right time. Our focus, and I want to be real clear with, with you, Board, our focus over the next five years is rebuilding the TRIMED that we know and love so that we can be better positioned for future growth and sustainable for decades to come. And I just really want to assure you again, I want to assure you and I want to assure the community that we are committed to doing all of this with care, compassion, and transparency. And with that, President Lewis, I'll turn it back to you to open it up for questions. I do have staff that's here that will help us. I have Nancy, I have Claire, I have Alan, JC. Um, you know, with every question that we can answer, standing by to assist in answering any questions that's there. And then I just want to conclude with just this last piece is at our September board meeting, I plan to present a comprehensive outreach plan that we are building right now to engage the community around service reduction. So, so thank you and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, General Manager De Su. Very detailed, and I think that would be, was very helpful for the board members. Um, at this time, can we go back to an overall picture? So I thought I saw Director Frisbee and we. Felicia, can you take us back to? I guess not. Uh, Director Frisbee, welcome. Was that you? It flashed and then went away.
Oh, I'm here. I hadn't raised my hand, but I do have a question. But if someone else has their hand raised and the interest to, you know.
I just wanted to remind everyone, I just first wanted to welcome you because I was welcoming board members and making notes since we're being recorded for which board members are here. And then remind every, everyone, use your hand raising emoji and then I'll call on you. And I don't see any other board members that have arrived. Okay, Director Flowers, you have your hand up and then Director Frisbee.
Yeah, you know, I just want to reiterate something that Director Frisbee articulated the last time we met and spoke about this, which is that, um, the more and more we learn and hear about this, the more and more it looks like a, um, slow crawl to the death of a transit agency. Um, in this plan, I'm not hearing any comprehensive um, and detail-oriented proactive strategy, not just to mitigate the impacts of the cuts, but to avoid the cuts altogether, right? Um, I'm confused about what our relationship with the legislature is like in this moment. Um, I'm confused about the way that we're approaching community engagement. Um, it doesn't seem like we're doing that in a proactive way. And I heard what you said, Sam, when you talked about, you know, coming up with a comprehensive plan. I, I just think we need to open up space and ask people how they feel about this. Um, and I fundamentally disagree with the idea of beginning cuts started, or excuse me. I know you said there, there are reductions in frequency, but I'm just going to call them cuts for the sake of being more efficient with my words. Um, I'm fundamentally opposed to the idea of beginning that work in November of this year prior to having had the opportunity to interact with the people who are going to be affected by those types of reductions in service, who are more so than anything else are riders. So, um, I do not like how this is shaping up or where this is going. Uh, and I think that there is a whole lot more we can be doing. I'd be interested to see, uh, and maybe this is a question for JC. I don't know if it's a question for him, if it's a question for Nancy or for Sam, but, um, can we come up with a slate of solutions, whether they're legislative options, whether they're new revenue streams, um, that are, one, more creative, two, more audacious, and three, that don't just, you know, take a small bite out of this cliff that we're facing, but that, um, that fully fund us to maintain current levels of operation moving forward. Uh, I'm not hearing a single solution that fully patches the gap. It seems as if we're kind of rolling over and accepting the gap. Um, and just accepting the fact that we're going to have to cut over the next three years when we have three years to build relationships, build strength, um, and get creative with the way that we approach this problem. Uh, so let me stop rambling and give you guys a chance to respond.
Let me start off and then I think we're going to bring a couple of people into the conversation. Appreciate your question, Director Flowers. Um, I want to start back, I think COVID did our country just a horrible, we, we, it was horrible on what, what occurred with COVID. That started kind of the spiral in the, in the United States with the inflation piece of it. And you, you notice everybody start raising the prices in the country and the revenues stopped because our ridership, um, was reduced by 50%. And then I, I think the biggest piece that we have dealt with is the closure of downtown Portland. Um, I think the commercial gaps that we have here in Portland itself. Um, I, I was just talking to the mayor yesterday. I brought him to our staff meeting to talk about what he's doing with the city and how we could be thought leaders with him to help him revive our city. Um, not only that, there's no growth in the city. If you notice also, it came out that Oregon was the fourth worst state to move to in 2025. So we, we've got a lot of things that's working against us that's, that's hurting our ridership right now that we've got it, like you said, we've got to come up with a robust plan that we've got to work with our elected officials and our government to strengthen that. And then when you got the, the, the mental health and the drugs that, that we're dealing with on our system and also around the region, that really hurts people for coming back to TRIMED. So I agree with you, we've got to come up with a robust ridership plan and that will be part of one of my goals that I'm submitting to you and the Board on bringing that robust plan together. The second piece of it is we have been moving forward with this significant deficit since 2020. So once we lost our, so we were bringing in $100 million in riders and, and obviously in revenue in 2019 per year, that reduced by 50% when the ridership left. So that $50 million have just been accumulating as we move through each year with that, without it being repaid back. Uh, we have not cut service. We have not minimized anything within the organization because we wanted to serve the people and we wanted to do exactly what you're saying. But now you've got the snowball effect now that if we do not do anything, what you see what ODOT is doing right now, you'll see that in 2029 and 2030 here at TRIMED. We'll reduce 50% because the ridership is not back, the revenue is not there. And then also, we are just starting and, and also in the past, working with our state leaders, working with all of our local leaders, um, to meet with them, to talk to them about, can you help us pay for some, just yesterday with the mayor, can you help us pay for some of the safety and security? So we, $48 million a year, sir, that we are spending in safety and security that was not part of our budget to get people to ride our system. So I'm talking to the mayor yesterday and his staff about, can you help us with some of this, this money here? So I, I would say, yes, I agree with you, we've got to put more robust plans together. But I don't think that there's not a fix out there that we could bring more money in other than what we've requested. One, to increase our fare. Two, to increase the STIF. Three, to start looking at additional businesses that we could bring into the organization to bring more revenue into the organizations. My colleagues across the country, and I'm going back to Boston to meet with them here, every one of them at the large levels, get a service level, they are faced with five to a billion dollars worth of debt because of COVID that they're trying to deal with. So this is a huge problem for us right now, and I really need your help. I need the Board's help. I, I need your help to say, let's, let's work together. Let's figure out how we're going to do this and how we're going to move it forward. Um, Claire, JC, I don't know if any follow-up from you.
And, uh, let me just turn me in real quick because I, I hear what you're saying. Uh, I just want to offer that, um, the state of Oregon is calling a, a special session in a few days here to prevent ODOT from sliding off that cliff, right? Uh, because of the tremendous amount of pressure that has been exerted upon the governor and state legislators. What I don't want us to do is to release all that pressure out of a safety valve by hacking away at our agency without actually putting that pressure and that heat on the people who have the power to meaningfully address the cliff that we're facing from a revenue-based perspective.
I appreciate that and I am absolutely supportive with you on that. Um, and I think we should have a governmental plan that we put together to put pressure on them. But I will say this back at you here is, as you noted, this past year, we had a, a deficit that we had to pay for, that we're taking out of reserves to pay for. If we continue, just say we operate with no changes this year, your deficit is going to be there. So that means that you take another 60 to 80 million dollars out of that $300 million and you start seeing that number going towards what ODOT is facing. Our reserves start to shrink. Because right now, I, I'll, I'll tell you this is, you've heard it. We have a majority in the House right now and the modest Democrats are saying that they are not interested in increasing, uh, increase in any type of tax increase to their constituents. And that's what I heard my 16 times down in, at the state Capitol here this year. And also the Republicans are not interested at all with any type of increase. So I think that's why you've seen the, the state transportation bill went down because of the weight, the high income, the affordability that's here in Oregon right now, putting us in the top two to three states that we are not affordable. two to three states that we are not affordable um to bring people here to leave. So you're right, I I agree with you. We've gotta work very closely with our state leaders and continue to press them and continue to let them know what our issues are. And I'm in. Um, TriMet's in, our leadership team is in on doing that. And any help that you and the board can give us, I definitely want to uh proceed with that.
And I think what I'm trying to articulate here is that being in does not mean beginning uh reductions in frequency of service starting in November. Uh, it means actually keeping that pressure on and coming up with a comprehensive uh and deeply thought out strategy uh that targets not just a special session coming up in a few days here, but the short session in February of twenty twenty six. So uh, just for the record, uh and for my colleagues here, um, I think being in looks different than the path forward that the agency is articulating right now.
So I just wanna make sure, so I'm hearing you say is to hold on the frequency reductions um in November. Is that, is that what I'm hearing you say?
That's correct. Uh, I don't think we should do anything that affects our riders without talking to our riders first. Uh, and if we need more time to do that, I I think we should give ourselves the time to do that uh so that we can make sure that no matter what happens with this agency, we're moving forward with the people we serve alongside us, rather than just uh, you know, looking at numbers, uh crunching some spreadsheets and, you know, with a flick of the pen, uh making changes that affect people's daily lives.
And I wanna just say to you, I I appreciate that. Um, we will start our outreach at the end of, so at the September board meeting, I'll bring, I'll be bringing the outreach schedule to the board. Uh, we will start the outreach, the first phase of the outreach um after the board meeting through October. And then we'll come back with phase two of the outreach. We will start in January and go through February. And we'll bring all the results back to the board. But, you know, some of the conversations are gonna be, some of the deeper cuts that we're we're having conversations around. But we will, we will receive public feedback at both times and will, the board will be the first stop that we bring that information back and have conversation around. But duly noted what you said about the November cuts.
Sam, it might be helpful to note that by taking action now, the depth of the cuts that we need to take are are lower. Three hundred million seems like a lot. But let's just say that we do nothing until twenty thirty one. If we wait until twenty thirty one, that three hundred million dollar uh deficit grows to five hundred and forty two million. And so by getting ahead of when our reserves run out, we're taking advantage of, in a sense, the time value of money. So if we take a ten million dollar cut today, over the next five years, that's a fifty million dollar savings. If we have to wait until twenty thirty one, then we're cutting deep into the organization to make up for that, for that lost time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it makes perfect sense. I'm not confused about it. I'm I'm more focused on where the pressure is being applied. Um, and and I don't think that um we should take pressure off of the state of Oregon, the governor and and legislators uh to help us avert these cuts um altogether.
Director Flowers, I might just pop in and we have, we have not.
May I ask everyone to raise their hand? Um, that way I can see even staff. That way I could call on folks, cuz we do have other um folks ahead of. But if you're responding to Director Flowers, go ahead and raise your hand. Or to Sam, that way I can monitor. Thank you. Okay. Um, go ahead, J C.
Thank you, President Lewis. Uh, Director Flowers, we are not letting up uh pressure on the our Oregon lawmakers. We are in constant communication with them. We are very organized, working through the Oregon Transit Association. Um, and we are, we have in front of us the point one percent increase. Hopefully, it is still in the package that goes before lawmakers. And then we will again try again in the long session in twenty twenty seven, knowing that the twenty twenty six short session, as you probably know, is usually for those corrections. It's never for something big. I would also note that we are looking for other revenue sources and, you know, we we're trying to figure out what it is we can proceed with. I would note that, you know, with Sam moving forward with this kind of plan, it does give us the uh three year runway, so to speak, to figure out what those new revenues could be. So we're not letting off the gas. And I just wanna um reassure you that we do have a very, very robust uh community engagement planned. Again, like uh Sam said, we will bring it before you on September, uh your September board meeting, and we will hit the ground running. We have planned open houses in each one of your districts, virtual open houses in various languages. So we definitely want to get in front of the community to hear their concerns before we make any of those large cuts. So more to come, but I I definitely hear you.
Um, thank you, um, J C. Um, before I go to you, Thomas, I have um Director um Frisbee waiting, but I want to just add a comment myself to a um reference that J J J T um stated earlier on the plan for the community. And I think that that should stay at the forefront of our communities. I'm, I myself am getting bombarded from community members on hearing the plan that we discussed today. And so I know that it, the plan is proposed to come to us in September. But to the general manager, I would like to know or how the board play a part. I don't know what that is, but J T and the rest of the board play a part in what it looks like and what's coming, as opposed to hi, here it is, this is what we're doing. I think input from the board to that plan. We live in our communities and we know who they are. I'm gonna put that as huge in Albana Trust with J T Flowers and his outreach and all of our board members. And so I think as of that, since we are in a crisis mode, I think it's important our public hear what we're doing. And I think the input from our board members in that plan that's going to our communities, we have a voice before it hits. Some say some preliminary scene before we get to September, and here it is. We don't usually have enough time for a robust discussion. So if there's something, a preliminary or a draft that can come out prior, that will help the board, especially those members that are committed to their communities, see and be prepared to ask valid questions and possibly spread where the vo- the news is going. Okay, I'm uh after, before I call on Director Kim, I'm gonna call on Director Frisbee.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of comments. As as I listened to the conversation first, I I do wanna make sure to did staff all feel like they got a chance to respond to J T? I know there were a couple of hands out. Okay. I have a couple of comments that came up throughout the course of that, and I think I wanna start with highlighting that I think a lot of the feedback that Director Flowers is providing is around communications. I appreciated some of the communications we heard today from General Manager D'Sou, which highlighted the further impact if the legislature does not act. And I think that is really important. That, to be really frank, was missing in our first communication around these cuts, even though the board specifically asked for it at the board meeting where we talked about it. And I think we need to be really clear that that communication needs to be in there every time we're talking about this through the end of the special session, whether that's September second, um or if it goes past that, if we don't suspend the rules. Um, so I think that's a really important part of this in terms of not letting up on the state in the next two weeks. I I also wanna echo, I think the board really wants to be a part of talking to the community around these proposed. I know Sam doesn't like the word cuts, but the reality is that reducing frequency is a cut to a lot of our riders. It's not getting rid of a line. That is important. It's better than getting rid of a line, absolutely a thousand times over. But it feels like a disruption in their lives with reduced service. And so um, I think the board would like to be part of rolling this out and helping navigate this, however that timing looks. Uh, whatever that timing looks like. Um, my, so I that's sort of my first comment. My second comment is also around communications. I want us to be careful around communicating things like the Forbes list that says Portland is one of the, Oregon is one of the worst states to move to. If you look at the metrics that actually made up that list, they're with all due respect to Forbes Magazine, which mostly makes its money off of clickbait uh links, they're kind of bullshit. Um, and I don't think it's particularly helpful for us to reinforce those talking points or uh refer to articles like that, which are truly just clickbaity. Um, similarly, when we talk about things like affordability um and what we're talking about is taxes, the tax issue is not a problem for most of our riders who are transit dependent right now. The tax issue is it attack the current tax challenge in the Portland metropolitan area. The tax burden is high compared to the rest of the country for people who make over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That is not our riders who are transit dependent. And so I am very anxious when we start talking about affordability and taxes and TriMet riders in the same breath, because I think that is sloppy. Um, I think it does not acknowledge the reality of what people are dealing with. And I think it's, it's not a helpful frame. So I would like to make sure that we're not doing that um in our communications and we're not reinforcing that message. It is true that our tax burden is high, second highest in the country for people who make over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That is not necessarily impacting most of our transit dependent riders. And I think we know that. So. Um, my third piece is actually question. Uh, Sam, you mentioned as part of the list is sort of other cuts that the agency is considering. Our, it is, uh uh not cuts, but spending reductions that the agency is looking at. You mentioned no new initiatives, and I was wondering if you could detail what that means.
First, I appreciate your your comments. Mostly no new personnel um that is coming um into the organization. We're gonna focus on what we are looking at in a strategic, in a strategy for the next five years. That's eighty second, that is TV highway, that's IVR. Anything outside of that right now is gonna be put on hold. We're gonna focus on what we stated that we need to do. And then the other piece of it would be the state of good repair. So those are the focus areas. Anything else we're we're pausing due to trying to balance our budget. Hopefully that, that made sense or not. The other piece I wanna add, just say to you, thanks for the in the conversation that you made about the first, both you and Director Flowers stated about putting the pressure on the legislative session um and the legislators. That is a key piece and very critical. My plan as a leader of the organization is to keep my foot on the gas with them. I just got an update from Miles Pingili and Lindsay on our points that, and you know, J C and Claire on our points that we're gonna be talking about uh with the legislators uh here in the next week about the why and the effect of the the point one. So that's gonna take place. One, the second point you brought up is the outreach piece. I plan on making sure that during the education session, we have a conversation about the outreach and receive input back from the board. And also at the September board meeting, we'll do that as well to make sure that you are part of of our outreach going out. The communications pieces, there's things that we can always work on, and you you're right. The Forbes list and and also the consumer affairs list are are lists. Um, I got it. I hear you loud and clear, and I'll make sure that uh that issue there is resolved with any public outreach from my perspective.
Thank you. I'm General Manager D'Sou, and um Director Fl- uh Frisbee did that wrap up before I call up. Thank you. Okay. Um, Director Kim, before I call on you, I just want to remind everyone our meeting was, is scheduled for an hour. We have about ten more minutes and just wanna focus on making sure all the questions from the Board of Directors are shared here today on the plan that we have for our budget. And also, it doesn't need to stop here. You can continue your conversations by direct calling the General Manager. So, but this was a good forum for us to return to get more clarity on his um General Manager report from our last board meeting. Um, Director Kim?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Sam. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Directors. It's, it's nice to hear. Everyone's thoughts. Um, I, as for me, I'm I'm supportive of the proposed steps to address our unfortunate financial crisis. I I actually really appreciated the ODOT example that Director Flowers had raised. Uh, in in terms of the high pressure that ODOT was and is facing, to me, the pressure only increased when ODOT earlier on, soon after the legislature initially failed to pass the the transportation package, announced the the forthcoming layoffs with, of course, a full intent to proceed with those budget adjustments. I think that announcement actually helped that agency get the public support and gave full notice to the electeds. I think it could, in terms of that that pressure analogy, it it could be similar for us recently. You know, we we've made our announcement of forthcoming cuts, although to Director Flowers and Frisbee's points, I I agree that we could have been more articulate with respect to the legislature's failure. And hopefully, similar to when ODOT made that announcement, their announcement, and put everyone on notice there. There could be relief coming in in coming years. But in the meantime, to me, this isn't a a game of chicken. It's since the board members have fiduciary duty, I I'm I'm supportive of unfortunately adjusting our our spending to to ensure that we can continue to fulfill our mission, though to a lesser extent corresponding to the cuts. I do see the phased approach of cuts, allowing the agency to be sustainable while still being clear and adding pressure to the public and 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 to the legislators that we still need help and in order to continue to provide the service that we provide in this region. That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Um, Kim. Um, Director, um, General Manager D'Sou, do you have any feedback or comments for Director Kim?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. Uh, Vice President Kim, really, really appreciate that and um continuing that pressure on the legislative leaders is is top of mind for me as what's been stated by by Director Flowers and and Director Frisbee. I I think another piece that we should talk about as a board is kind of, you know, what is some of your thoughts about how we continue to apply that pressure with them? Because I've I've been down, as I stated to you sixteen times, and I'm continuing to talk to, and I was talking with Director Director Frisbee just last week, about a week before last, about this. We've gotta figure out how to change some mindsets and and also how to how to bring, continue to show the value that we're bringing to this region a- and also to the state as being the largest transportation agency in the state of Oregon. So so that approach, I think that we've, we've gotta continue to press that as we move forward and putting pressure on them. To your, to your point about the phased approach, To your, to your point about the phased approach, I have promised you, the public, that we will move forward with care, compassion, and also transparency. And I think that's critical for us as we, as we move here. We truly do not want to hurt our customer. And I get that because I heard you, Director Flowers, and Director Frisbee made it very clear, you know, that we need to take care of the customer. And I get, that's why our first look at this was to look at frequency and not cutting service lines or max lines. And, and that's critical to me because our job, my job to you is to make sure that we serve our region. And that's all three counties and all 24 cities with opportunities for them to be able to go and better their lives. So you've got my commitment as, as your leader on that. And I do not want to harm anyone from that perspective. But I'm also a realist on the other side. I know that we have a budget deficit that has snowballed. And if we don't do something about that and we do nothing, we will be like ODOT. And, and that's the piece that we've got to continue to put pressure on the, on our elected leaders. And that's not only just state, but that's also local and county leaders that we need to work with as well. And then we need to take it to our people, to the public, to the community and get their feedback. So I'm on board and, and yes, I get it very, very clearly.
Thank you, General Manager Dusu. I see a hand up. Director Flowers?
Yeah, I appreciate what you just said, Sam. And, and I think we can, from a communications perspective, I think this can be more straightforward than we're making it, right? Right now, I think we're simultaneously trying to be the good guy and the bad guy at one time. We are trying to engage with writers and ask people who rely on our system, you know, what cuts make the most sense and when, understanding that we're facing this cliff. And then we're also the people executing those cuts. But I think in reality, if you ask anybody at this agency on the staff side, if you could, with the sweep of a pen, backfill this gap that we're facing and eliminate this cliff to maintain our service levels over the course of the next five, six years. Every single person at TriMet would say, absolutely, I'm on board with that. And I would exercise my power to do so if I had that power. So the question of intention doesn't exist on our end. I think it exists on the end of legislators and statewide leaders with the agency and the capacity to actually impact whether or not we are able to deliver on our promise to our riders. So I don't think we can let them weasel their way out of that responsibility. And I don't think that those engagements always have to be so deferential. I think we can very plainly put that decision on them in the real terms in which it'll be experienced by our writers, right? And by our staff and the people who make TriMet run, right? If you folks fail to increase, just fail to backfill this gap, what you are saying is you're comfortable laying off hundreds of people and disrupting, and sometimes derailing the lives of tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of people across the Portland metro region. And we can build a, a public facing campaign that pulls the people who rely on our system and who make our system run into this effort to exert pressure, right? I think my core message here is that we will win if we bring people along with us, right? And apply pressure where pressure deserves to be applied. I think we will lose if we continue being deferential and expecting these people to change their behavior because they won't.
I appreciate that. That's a very, very powerful statement, and I totally agree with you on that. I'll, I'll give you an example too, is that during my tenure going down there and testifying this year, TriMet was one of the only transit agencies to say, if this doesn't happen, this is what will happen. To put pressure on them and let them know that. But, but I appreciate the good guy, bad guy piece of it, and we'll take a look at that. I do want to say internally, we just started talking to our people and we have asked them to start participating and how can we solve this problem? This question of intention that you talked about. How can, how can you help us to solve this problem? And then my directness with elected leaders and the public going forward is that we need your help as well because we've got this problem and we need to, we need to solve it together. It's all of our problems and we need to put that pressure there to make sure that everyone is on board with it.
That's right. And I think part of them understanding the severity of this moment is not just us saying we need your help. It's you have a decision to make. And the decision that you make, if we bring people along with us in a real way, then the decisions these folks make will translate into whether or not they get reelected next cycle, right? Like, I think we can make this material for, for legislators in a concrete way, so long as we do it in a way that not just brings our writers and the people who make our system run along with us, but actually centers them as the driving force in this effort, given that they're the folks who will be most impacted by these decisions.
I, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Director Flowers, General Manager Dusu. This concludes our hour together. I don't see any other hands raised. But remember, the conversation does not need to end here, Director, for any of the directors and for the executive C-suite that is here today with General Manager. We can continue the conversation. Don't think there's any other business, but I do appreciate everyone being here. And thank you for those board members that made a change in their day and actually followed through with, you know, I promised to have another meeting with the General Manager and you came and you shared your thoughts. Yes, General Manager, you get one minute. No, I'm just kidding.
I just want to let Board Director Frisbee, Director Flowers, Vice President Kim, yourself. And I understand that Director Kellogg is on the phone. I appreciate you. We all appreciate what you guys are doing. Want to let you know we need your help as we move forward. So I'm reaching out to you as the board to work with us as, as we move forward in this, this process. But I'll say this again, I want to just make sure you, you, everything that we do is with care, compassion and transparency. I think that's the critical piece as we move forward here. And I've heard both from the community and also internal to our organization, everywhere I go is that we really appreciate that because that is what's going to unite us and get us together. But the key piece that I heard today is pressure. Putting pressure on our elected leaders, putting pressure, making sure that people understand the impacts of what's going to take place and, and we will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any no other comments? Okay, I have some closing. That concludes our special meeting for August 20th. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, our regular business meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 24th in our board room. Thank you to everyone. Thank you, J C, Shelley, Nancy, Claire, Alan, trying to find everyone faces that I see, and all the support staff that brought us here today. Thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated. I know we're out of sync in our meetings, but this is important. We're at a time where pressure's on for us to be a team and for everyone else to participate the best they can in any way possible. Thank you. That concludes our meeting.